This is the Thursday, May 12th, 2011, meeting of the zoning board of examiners and appeals. Would you call the roll, please?
Timothy Vig.
Here.
Dean Cars.
Here.
Jeff Ronn. Joshua Fink.
Present.
Ann Denny.
Here.
Kate Williams.
Here.
Dale Patrick.
Moving along on our agenda, we have no minutes for approval. Brings us to item C, special order of business executive sessions. Do we have any disclosures this evening? Are there any disclosures any of the board members need to make? Seeing none, that moves on to the consent agenda. We have three resolutions before us for approval on the consent agenda. Resolution number 2011-008, resolution number 2011-009, and resolution number 2011-0010. Could I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Mr. Vig, Ms. Denny, you've indicated you would second that. Is there anyone wishing to pull an item from the consent agenda for discussion? Any objection to approval of the consent agenda? Do you want us to vote? Seeing no objections, the consent agenda is approved. We have no appearance requests, unfinished business, or regular agenda this evening. So that moves us on to our public hearings. Before we begin our public hearing, hearings tonight, as you can see, there are five of the board members present tonight. A fully constituted board is nine members. So in order for a motion to grant, to be, in order for variance to be approved, it requires a majority of the fully constituted board, or five members voting in favor of the variance, which means that any variance we hear this evening will require that all four of the attended, of the board members in attendance to vote in favor. So with that in mind, the zoning board has a policy on postponement of public hearing applications. And I'd like to read that for everyone, for the petitioners this evening. When there is a five, a short five-member board or commission, and a postponement is offered and agreed by the petitioner, they will be moved to the next regular agenda. This should occur within 30 days, which does not require re-noticing the case, new public notice hearings, new public hearing notices and advertising. If the petitioner is willing to a postponement but unable to attend the next available meeting date within 30 days, the petitioner has a one-time only option to choose the next date certain he/she can attend at no extra fee. When a postponement is requested by the petitioner, there is a $750 rescheduling fee, and a new public hearing date shall be determined by the Department of Community Planning and Development. This will put their case in the next available cutoff date queue, as if they were submitting their case for the first time. So with that in mind, I would like to hear from each of the, Mr. Fink?
Mr. Chairman, I think when you were explaining the short board, you indicated it would take four votes for a motion to pass. I just, that's what I heard. I want to make sure it was clear that you said-
It was five. If I said four, I meant five. So, thanks. But all, five of, of the five board members in attendance. So before we hear our first case this evening, I'd like to hear from each of the petitioners this evening, for the benefit of, if anyone does wish to postpone, they don't have to sit through what, I don't think it should be too long of a meeting, but nonetheless, like to offer to each of the petitioners the, the opportunity for a postponement if they so desire. So the first case this evening, 2011-049, is the petitioner here this evening, Elizabeth Crowe. Could you come forward, please? State and spell your name for the record.
Is that good?
That's good.
Okay. It's Elizabeth Crowe, E.L.I.Z.A.B.E.T.H. Crowe is C.R.O.W.
Thank you, Ms. Crowe. And do you wish your case to be heard this evening, or do you-
I do.
I'm sorry?
Yes.
Yes, you would.
Tonight.
Okay. Thank you. The second case is 2011-050. The petitioner is Edmund Schuster. Is the petitioner here? I think this is him. Could you state and spell your name for the record, please?
I'm Edmund Schuster, petitioning for a postponement on account of a short board.
Okay, so you will, you are requesting the postponement. And Mr. Barrett, can you tell us and everyone in attendance when that case would be rescheduled?
June 9th, Mr. Chairman.
That would be at the June 9th hearing. Very well. So case 2011-050 has been postponed. Anyone here wishing to testify on that case, that will, we will be taking that up at the June meeting. So with that in mind, that brings us to our first case. And before I, we hear our first case, I would like to explain the order of business on variance hearings. Excuse me. The chair shall introduce the variance and explain the procedure to be followed. The variance case number and the name of the applicant shall be read into the record. The board shall hear and rule on any objections to the sufficiency of notice. The board shall hear a brief staff, excuse me, a brief staff presentation outlining the variance, not to exceed 10 minutes. On the conclusion of the staff presentation, the board members and the applicant may then direct questions to the staff through the chair. The applicant shall give his or her presentation, not to exceed 10 minutes. Throughout the proceedings, the burden of proof rests upon the applicant, who must convince the board by a preponderance of the evidence that the variance should be granted. On conclusion of the applicant's presentation, the board members and the staff may direct questions to the applicant through the chair. The hearing shall then be opened for public testimony. Each person has three minutes. All persons who testify may be questioned by the board staff for the applicant. On conclusion of the public testimony, the staff, followed by the applicant, shall have the right of rebuttal. The board shall proceed to develop oral findings and conclusions with regard to the variance and disposition of the variance. The staff shall reduce the oral findings and conclusions to writing for subsequent adoption by the board at a later meeting. The matter then rests with the board, and the chair asks for a positive motion from the board. With that, we have our first case this evening, 2011-049. The petitioner is Elizabeth Crowe, who has indicated she is here this evening. Mr. Barrett, could you provide us with the sufficiency of notice, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. 153 public hearing notices were mailed for this. We received six responses in support of the application. The property was advertised on the website and posted by the applicant. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Would you proceed with your presentation?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The variance request is to allow an existing width of sidewalk, approximately five feet wide, to remain in place when the code requires that for the central business district zones, when redevelopment occurs, the sidewalk is to be widened to 11 and 1/2 feet if there is retail on the first floor of the building, or to 10 and 1/2 feet if there is no retail on the ground floor of the building. So I'll say again, the applicant is asking not to have to widen the sidewalk, but to leave a sidewalk at approximately five feet in width. And I should add that Dr. Crowe built a new sidewalk. It is just at the five-foot width, not the legal width. The staff report, page three, is an as-built, that was the property as it previously existed, showing a single-family home and garage. Page four is the plan that was submitted with the permit for the new office building, the medical office building. And the drawing on page five is the footprint of the building with the landscaping as proposed. Subject property is a standard legal lot. It was subdivided in 1915 and zoned in 1946. The B2B zoning became effective in 1980, and the requirement for the additional sidewalk width was added to the downtown districts in 1989. The lot was originally occupied by a single-family home built in 1941. In 2010, the applicant obtained a permit for a 2,880-square-foot office building. The house was demolished, and the office construction was begun. The plans that were submitted for the office construction are on pages five and 26 of the report, and they do show a 10 and 1/2-foot sidewalk along the front of the building. So this request is to allow the sidewalk of five feet approximately to remain in place. The intent of the wider sidewalk is to provide adequate pedestrian access in the downtown area, for people to walk side by side and still leave room for people looking in the retail windows of the various storefronts. The applicant is basing part of the request on the smaller-width sidewalk to preserve two significant birch trees, which would be damaged and almost certainly destroyed if the sidewalk had to be widened to the required width. The municipal arborist and urban forester have examined the two trees as part of this application, and are a bit concerned about the viability of the trees anyway. So we have a condition in the report to hopefully address their issues, and we'll get to that at the end of the report. As to the standards, standard number one, that there are extraordinary physical circumstances affecting the property, the standard is not substantially met. There are no unusual, usual physical features directly related to the need for the variance. The lot is level, comparable in size and shape to other lots in the area. The requirement for the wide sidewalk is to accommodate pedestrians in the downtown area, and the wide sidewalk could have been built during the new office construction. Standard two, because of the physical circumstances, strict application would create an undue hardship. The standard is not substantially met. There are no physical circumstances directly related to the need for the variance. And the common rights of enjoyment under the code are not restricted by a sidewalk requirement. The office or the home, as had originally existed, and a 10-foot sidewalk can all be accommodated on the property, although the trees might certainly be lost. Standard number three, the hardship is not self-imposed, and the standard is not substantially met. Again, the lot has nothing unusual about it in terms of its physical attributes, size and shape, all similar to lots throughout the neighborhood. The need for the variance is a result of the actions of the applicant. The code requirement for the wide sidewalks has been in place since 1989, and the plan submitted with the building permit application does indicate a 10 and 1/2-foot wide sidewalk along the front of the building. Standard number four, that the variance, if granted, will not adversely affect the use of adjacent property. As permitted under the code, the standard is partially met. There are no drainage, runoff, traffic visibility issues, no fire separation issues. There is adequate parking for the office. Although, the, the standard is only partially met because although the neighborhood is not retail-oriented, it is pedestrian-oriented, and over time, it is expected that all sidewalks in the area during redevelopment of the various lots would be widened to either 10 and 1/2 or 11 and 1/2 feet, as applicable for the use. Standard number five, the variance is in keeping with the intent of the code, and does not change the character or permit an unpermitted use. That standard is substantially met. This is simply a dimensional variance. Standard six, the variance, if granted, does not adversely affect the health, safety, and welfare of the municipality of Anchorage. That standard, as in standard number four, is partially met. There are no immediate concerns, no life, health, safety issues. But this is a long-term goal of the zoning code, to provide for the wider sidewalks as properties redevelop. And standard number seven, the variance, if granted, is the minimum variance that would make possible a reasonable use of the land. The standard is not substantially met. A reasonable use is for a single-family home, as previously existed, or the medical office now in use. The wide sidewalk could have been accommodated, and does not restrict a reasonable use of the land. Because there are several standards not met, the department must recommend for denial. However, should the board find for approval, there are four conditions on pages 12 and 13. The condition on page 13, which is number four, to close the current building permit, will happen automatically as part of Dr. Crowe's certificate of occupancy. Condition number three on page 12 is the one I wanted to mention briefly, in consultation with the urban forester and arborist. Because of possible damage done to the trees already, they might be lost, so the arborist and forester ask for a tree maintenance and replacement plan for a three-year period, should those trees die or be deemed to be unhealthy and in need of removal. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Are there any questions of staff by the board? Mr. Vig.
Thank you. Mr. Barrett, in condition number two on page 12, it refers to an as-built dated December 13th. And I looked through the packet for that, but I, maybe I wasn't looking at the right sheet. Is it in the packet?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vig, I'm, the one on page three is dated July 2nd, 2010. The drawing on page four isn't dated. And then the landscape plan on page five is just dated 2010. Let me check the file itself. It may just have been on the oversized sheet, and I substituted the drawings for it. The oversized as-built, which is not, the oversized, is not in the package, is dated 12/10/10. Is that the date that you were questioning?
I think it's 12/13.
It says 12/13 in the packet, but-
Mr. Chairman, I'll put that down as a typo to myself. It should be 12/10/10. Thank you.
And another question, Mr. Barrett, on, on page 38 of the packet is, are comments on this case, and a question raised about whether, whether this, whether or not the variance may be viewed as a deferral of improvement obligations until such time as uniform sidewalk improvements are constructed along the entire north side of 7th Avenue, as opposed to a property-by-property patchwork approach. And further, at the bottom of that paragraph, says that this petition may, may present the opportunity to request and acquire a walkway easement on this property for such future sidewalk improvements in consideration of the variance. Was that considered in your, in your recommendations?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vig, yes, it was considered in the recommendation. The way the code is worded, the wider sidewalk is supposed to be built from, or is required to be built from the back of the sidewalk up to the storefront, ideally with the 10 and 1/2 or 11 and 1/2-foot width. In this case, as is the case all along that street, there is more than adequate right-of-way, so that we won't actually have to take private property for the wider sidewalk. The wider sidewalks would come as a muni project, all within the right-of-way. Dr. Crowe is getting stuck with this because she's the first one on the block, literally, to be doing this, and there are no immediate plans for the rest of the street by the municipality.
I guess I, while not having the as-built, I can't check that, but on page 26, it looks as though the, the proposed wide sidewalk encroaches onto the property by a few feet.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vig, that, that's correct. Because the muni has no plans for the wider sidewalks along 7th Avenue, and Dr. Crowe is proceeding, I don't like to make it sound like this, but because Dr. Crowe is proceeding ahead of schedule, she is tasked with constructing the wider sidewalk on her property. Whereas if it, if she weren't doing anything, and the muni came along in five years, all the work would be done for everyone along 7th Avenue.
But it would still require public use easements or dedication of additional property to construct the wider sidewalk, would it not?
No, sir, because the existing right-of-way width is adequate for sidewalks, travel lanes, parking curb, and gutter. The, I understand your, your concern without having an entire street plan or as-built there. The street isn't built exactly down the middle, but it is fully 60 feet of right-of-way. I made sure of that with PMNE and with the right-of-way people. So all of that construction, all of the wide sidewalk construction can be accommodated inside the right-of-way.
I think I, I understand. It sounds like it's a much more involved construction project by having to move curbs and things than to make it all fit.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vig, it, it would be, yes, much more expensive for the municipality and the taxpayers in general with an entire changeover for the street. I don't have an answer for you on that end.
Mr. Barrett, I'm sorry, Mr. Vig. I, I guess I, and Mr. Vig, I think great minds must think alike, because I, I'd like to continue down this vein. With the drawings that I'm looking at, and granted, they're very small scale, I don't see that there's sufficient right-of-way to, from the back of curb. Based on the photos and the drawings that I'm looking at, I'd estimate if that fence line is on property that are in some of these pictures, that there's six or seven feet from the back of curb to the property line. What are you, what, have you seen a drawing or something that shows that there is sufficient right-of-way from the back of curb? Do we have 11 and 1/2 feet? Because my, my initial thought in looking at this was that there was six or seven feet from the back of curb to the property line, just based on what I'm looking at.
Mr. Chairman, you're correct. From the back of curb, it is approximately six or seven feet to the property line. So some of the wider sidewalk will be where curb and gutter is now located, and that'll all be scooched over. But yes, your interpretation's correct. And there is a drawing, and I thought I had it in here. A typical cross-section of what the, the 60-foot looks like. I think I looked, overlooked inserting it, but yes, sir, I have seen the cross-section.
Okay. And is it, bear with me, I think there was some, some reference to a drawing in our packet that shows what it would look like for them to build the 11 and 1/2-foot sidewalk. What page is that drawing?
The, the drawing on page five that shows the building footprint and the landscaping, that sidewalk shown adjacent to 7th Avenue, that is 10 and 1/2 feet. That's what Dr. Crowe would be required, because she's not retail. I apologize for the scale, but-
Okay, so, but on page five, but I guess the, the part that's not shown on that drawing is, they would have to shift that existing curb line more into the street, and, which means that if you're driving or walking along this street, you've got a curb line, then it's going to jog in two or three or four feet for an 11 and 1/2-foot sidewalk in front of this lot, and then it jogs back out to its existing condition. So effectively, the road would be narrowed to put an 11 and 1/2-foot sidewalk in.
The, yes, the entire roadway would be narrowed. The streets will still be legal travel width, and there'll be parking on each side, but yes, you're correct.
Okay. All right. So I'm, you're piercing the void with me, so, thanks. Okay. Thank you. Are there other questions of the-
I'm not sure. I think I'm following this, Mr. Chairman. So if, if they were required to put in the 10 and 1/2-foot sidewalk, that would be from the current back of the curb. Is that correct?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Fink, if Dr. Crowe were to proceed on her own now, because of the redevelopment she's done, the 10 and 1/2-foot sidewalk would be entirely on her property, from the property line in.
And then down, in the future, if, if the city redevelops that, they're going to move the road south, and the new sidewalk would be currently where the curb and some parking is?
We'd either have an extra-wide sidewalk well beyond the 10 and 1/2 feet, or we'd have a zigzag in, in the layout, as, as Mr. Cars was explaining.
All right. We're, we're going to work on not getting out of here in 30 minutes, I can tell now, because I want to revisit your comment, Mr. Barrett. They, this petitioner, if they were to leave that curb line where it is right now, and put an 11 and 1/2-foot attached sidewalk in, a portion of that sidewalk would be on private property. Yes? Correct? Correct. Okay. Can we, I mean, I understand what the code says, but, I mean, then we're having people walking on private property then. And I can understand if there's right-of-way available, but if we're, if we're having people, you know, build, build the sidewalk, what gives the pedestrian, the public, the right to utilize that on private property without an easement in place?
The, Mr. Chairman, the, the legal language I've not seen. I just know how the code is written, and that in instances like this, it would be from the property line. I, I can only assume that when the muni does eventually change the entire street, and whatever other sidewalks still need to be widened, that the alignment would be refigured, and the private property portion given back to Dr. Crowe. But what, what would give the public the right to walk on private property as a sidewalk? We've not got into the discussion of easements. This is the first one of these I know of that's happening in this type of situation. Elsewhere in downtown, the buildings are built to the property line in order to maximize their lot coverage, and so it's not an issue. But now we're talking about what is not really a retail area. It's quasi-residential and office, and it is very different. A lot of people are questioning why the wide sidewalk requirement was extended to this area. I'm totally sympathetic to the thought processes you're going through. I haven't sorted it all out myself completely.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Mr. Fink?
I mean, if there's no right-of-way or easement, wouldn't that be a taking? I mean, if they had to put a public sidewalk on their property, without the easement or right-of-way there?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Fink, it's, there's certainly no right-of-way. Would the muni go in when the process is happening and, and add a right-of-way, excuse me, add an easement? It's, it's not been discussed. I don't know. Is it a taking? I'm not an attorney, obviously. In a sense, I suppose it is, but it's, it's in the adopted code. It's out there for everyone to see ahead of time, so I think the presumption is, if you buy property here, you better know what you're getting into. It's a tacit acknowledgement that there's going to be public trespass allowed on, on the front of your property.
Are there any other questions of staff? Seeing none, could the applicant come forward, please? And Ms. Crowe, you have 10 minutes for your presentation, and we must find that all seven standards are met in order to grant the variance. So if you will, in your presentation, make sure you address the seven standards, please.
Okay. Can I get some assistance from a DOW representative?
You sure. You should. You should. And it will, it will all be part of your ten minutes.
Okay. And then, can I save ten seconds for rebuttal if anybody challenges or...
You bet, yeah, there's a lot of people.
If there's public commentary?
You better be ready.
There's nobody here, and I don't want to do that "I didn't look behind me." Can I rescind my ten seconds? I want it back.
Yeah. Yes.
Oh, thank you. There was a quick correction to Mr. Barrett's report. The sidewalk isn't new. We haven't replaced the sidewalk yet. We were waiting on the variance hearing findings before we did replace the sidewalk. My name is Elizabeth Crowe. I'm a women's health physician. I've been in Anchorage since 2000. This is home now. I've been here not quite eleven years. I came up here to work at ANMC. I worked there for seven and a half years. Three years ago, I joined Dr. George Stransky in a very small women's health private practice. I still fly to the bush about every other month to help with OB/Respite for the providers out there. I'm really busy. I have two kids who are six and eight. They go to Inlet View Elementary. They're girls. I'm married. My husband's here tonight. The reason I built a building downtown was I wanted to work close to home. There was no medical office space available, and I did take over the practice for Dr. Stransky. He still works with me, but as a part of that transition, we moved our office downtown. Our old locale in East Anchorage was a quiet, small, private, treed office, and our patients requested that we kind of keep that feeling, which I think we did, choosing the neighborhood we did. I also wanted to present today instead of delaying, because I have this gorgeous building in a wonderful neighborhood surrounded by sand, and I didn't feel like waiting another month was fair to my neighbors or to my patients, having dust blow around, bringing dirt in to the new building. So I'm excited to get the landscaping done, however it's going to be. So addressing the first part of the code, there exists exceptional or extraordinary physical circumstances of the subject property, such as streams, wetlands, slope. In such physical circumstances, they're not applicable to other land in the same district. My response to that is that this is an old neighborhood with sidewalks and tree-lined streets, which is really unique for Anchorage. We wanted to maintain that feel and not stand out. If we did follow the code, it would have sort of an unesthetic result. It wouldn't match with the rest of the block at all. I did go and measure the block when I found out about the variance with a friend of mine, and they all are about five to six feet across. This is a residential and service industry area that provides a safe, quiet feeling. A large sidewalk requiring the removal of the largest trees on the block, which mine are, will have a very negative impact on both my neighbors and my business. The second, actually, did you want to comment anything different? Kevin, do you want to comment afterwards? Okay, thanks. Okay. Secondly, the code is, because of these physical circumstances, a strict application of this code would create an exceptional or undue hardship upon the property owner and would deprive the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by other properties in the same district under the terms of the zoning ordinance. This code is for a retail area. We're not a retail area. We have small service industry and homes, and once again, we moved our office there to have that feeling. I did spend a lot of money and time on design to keep our scale within the neighborhood. I think our building enhances the neighborhood. I do feel like the code would be sort of like spraying graffiti all over the building. If I have a, you know, double the size of cement in the front, I just want my sidewalk to look like my neighbor's, and I know there wasn't a huge response, but the neighbors seemed to concur with me. Number three, the hardship is not self-imposed, and special conditions and circumstances do not result from the actions of the applicant, and such conditions and circumstances do not merely constitute inconvenience. The code will create a hardship, is my response, by altering in a negative way the community in which my office is located, by creating an awkward doubling of sidewalk just in front of my building, resulting in cement replacing much-desired greenery. The hardship has been the time and money spent on the design and the care, and also on the variance. It would be really easy as a business owner to just slap in ten feet of sidewalk. It would have been cheaper. I could have put in thirty feet of sidewalk, instead of spending two days of my time getting the application together and trying to learn the process. So I feel like I'm, as a community member, doing the right thing. I understand the code, but I do feel like this is different than the code. I do feel the community member of the code would be an irresponsible thing to enforce. The other thing is, when I purchased the property, I hired an A-team. I had RIM, I had Dowell, I have Pete Hickel's, my construction people. I'm a physician, I'm not a developer. I've never built commercially before. I really just wanted to work close to home, and it's terrific. I'm very close to my kid's school, and I love being in my neighborhood. So I wasn't aware of the code, although I know, as a property owner, that was my responsibility. I had consultants to help me with that. It did come up after, about two and a half months after I had purchased the property in June, and by that time, I had spent my savings, over a half a million dollars on property and also planning and design, and I couldn't back out. So the reason there was a delay in the variance is that I'm working full-time. I have work, family, and moving the business and taking over the business responsibilities. Otherwise, I would have done this sooner. Do you want to comment? No, okay, I'll keep going. The variance, if granted, is in keep, let's see, the variance, if granted, will not adversely affect the use of the adjacent properties as permitted under this code. If the variance is granted, the neighborhood will be enhanced with our building and with its trees and greenway, and it will be a consistent feel to the block. These natural enhancements reinforce pedestrian traffic. It's not heavy. I don't think it will be on our block. All our neighbors' comments have supported this variance as well. E, the variance, if granted, is in keeping with the intent of this code, will not change the character of the zoning district in which the property is located and will not permit a use that is not otherwise permitted in the district in which the property lies. The variance will allow our neighborhood to have a consistent pedestrian area and setback, which are its assets. I mean, we're really not asking for a change in use, we're just asking for how the property, we're not asking for how the property is used, we're asking to just keep the property the same.
And Ms. Crowe, you have two and a half minutes left.
Keep going, okay. So I have Fs, I don't know which number it is on yours. The variance, if granted, I think this is six. The variance, if granted, does not adversely affect the health, safety, and welfare of the people of the municipality of Anchorage. My response is, if the variance is granted, there won't be sidewalk running into mature trees and our fences. I mean, I have a fence on my east side, and the sidewalk will go right into the fence. I'm not sure if that's really a good safety thing, safety feature. There'll be less dust, less runoff into the sewers because there's a greenway. There will be shade and natural habitat, and these all benefit the health, safety, and welfare of the neighbors and then, and the neighborhood. Lastly, the variance, this is number seven. Granted, is the minimum variance that will make possible reasonable use of the land. The code is unreasonable for our location, is my response, as a lack of trees and green replaced with a double-sized sidewalk would detract from the current use of the land, which is as a quiet, safe, treed, green pocket in Anchorage for low-density service industries. Now, we're kind of naturally bordered off. We have a street, which is not an easy pedestrian street to cross. I cross it regularly because I like to go to the other part of Anchorage. It's hard to get past there. We're bordered by the cemetery on the east and Denali Elementary on the south. It's just this quiet, treed area. It's very pleasant, very safe, shaded, soon, and turning green. It's nice. We can continue as a, excuse me, we can continue, as a medical office with a larger sidewalk and less green, but the calm and safety and covering provided by a variance would be an enhancement, not a disruption, to the current function of our area and to the purpose of our office. Thank you. Do you want to say anything?
My name's Kevin.
State and spell your name for the record.
Kevin Doniere. Last name is D-O-N-I-E-R-E. I'm a landscape architect with Dowell HKM, and the main point that we're trying to do with this variance is save those forty-foot and fifty-foot tall trees. They do have a value to the community, to the neighborhood. We want to keep them, to keep the character of the neighborhood, as well as they help with stormwater, with oxygen. There's a lot of environmental values that we want, we would like to keep these existing trees, and there's a, there's a value to the, like a price value, a price tag we can put on these trees as well. I talked to an urban forester, and he gave value to these trees at around $5,000 each or so, so it's around $10,000 that would be, you know, the value to the property owner. Taking those away would kind of disrupt the character of the site. Finally, I just wanted to note that Title 21 is going through a rewrite, and they're talking about or adding a lot more value to existing vegetation. So that's what we're trying to do here, is save the existing vegetation and meet the character of the neighborhood. So again, we're kind of going in the direction of the new Title 21 with saving existing vegetation.
Thank you, Mr. Doniere. Are there any questions of the applicant by the board? Any, you know, Mr. Vig?
I noticed in your, in your application, on page seventy-one, you have an evaluation from Great Land Tree Service about, on the trees?
Yeah.
And they estimate the age of them at twenty-five to thirty years old.
Uh-huh.
I looked, but I didn't see, I have no idea how long one of those trees typically lives. Do you know, or your landscape architect?
Our Berth's comment, and he said he could make them live for a hundred years with the correct maintenance, so...
So they have a long lifetime?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions? Seeing none, does staff have any questions of the applicant?
No, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Does the applicant have any questions of staff? All right. With that, we will open this for a public hearing. Anyone wishing to testify, please come forward. You can, and please state and spell your name for the record.
Hi, my name's Doyle Crane, C-R-A-N-E.
Thank you, Mr. Crane. You have three minutes for your...
I'm the business manager for Dr. Center, which is, I don't know, fifty feet from them. We're at Seventh and Barrow. I've been there twenty years, and those trees were old when I got there. So those trees will not interfere with any handicapped access anywhere, and the sidewalk's plenty wide. People have been going to the museum for twenty years since I've been there. It would really be terrible to take those trees down. I mean, they really add to the neighborhood. And like today, they were, you know, they're just blooming, and they're huge, and they're gorgeous. And, I mean, I would be really disappointed if they came down. And I don't know if the downtown partnership put in, spoke with you guys, but I had spoken with them, and they assured me that they were going to come in also.
I think they would.
So, but please don't make or take the trees down. I mean, they, people going to the museum or the federal building, they're just kind of tranquil right there. I mean, I've spent thousands to save our trees. So I literally did. I mean, one tree, I've spent close to $3,000 on it. So just because they add to the neighborhood. So that's really all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Crane. Are there any questions of Mr. Crane by the board? Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public wishing to testify? Anyone at all? Seeing, hearing no one, the public hearing is closed. Does staff have any rebuttal?
No, thank you.
Does the applicant have any rebuttal? As Crowe has indicated, she does not. With that, the matter rests with the board. Could I have a positive motion from the board, from a board member, please? Mr. Vig?
Mr. Chairman, in case number 2011-049, I move that we grant a variance from AMC 21.40.160L 050F sidewalks to allow the existing width of sidewalk, approximately five feet wide, to remain, subject to the four conditions on, as noted on pages twelve and thirteen of the staff packet.
Thank you, Mr. Vig. Ms. Williams, you've indicated you would second that?
Yes.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Williams. Mr. Vig, would you speak to your motion, please?
Thank you. I, this is an interesting one. I have not run across one like this before, and so I'm interested in some of the opinions of the other board members after the, after I have my discussion. But with regard to standard number one, I believe that physical circumstance of this particular lot could be considered the two large mature trees. If they were a commonplace feature along this street, I think people would be less interested in preserving them. So the fact that there are so many people interested in preserving them tells me that there's some, some exceptional or extraordinary value to this, to the physical presence of those trees. So for that reason, I think that I could, I could make a case that that is substantially met, that that standard is substantially met. Standard number two, strict application of the code would create an exceptional or undue hardship upon the property owner and would deprive the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed. It seems to me that the applicant has a choice of, if the code was to be applied, that these trees would, in effect, be removed, or the applicant would be required to reconstruct a portion of Seventh Avenue to shift the curb line on the north and south, to the south by several feet, not just for her own frontage, but of course, then they would have to taper back in and out to match the existing street. So I think that's an exceptional or undue hardship, and I believe that that's substantially met. Standard number three, the hardship is not self-imposed, special conditions and circumstances do not result from the actions of the applicant. Again, it, the physical circumstances, the trees being in the place that they are located, is not something that the applicant created. Special conditions and circumstances that would be created by complying with the code would be, I guess, imposed, because there's no, there doesn't appear to be a provision for providing public, public use easements on the property to construct the sidewalk. So I think it's, I don't believe it's a self-imposed hardship or a self-imposed condition. Standard number four, variance, if granted, will not adversely affect the use of adjacent property. I believe that that is partially met, or that it's substantially met. Actually, I disagree with staff a little bit on that. I think it's, it's important that the adjacent property and this property are compatible and match each other. Constructing a wide sidewalk in this property and ending it at a fence line on the adjacent property seems to me to be a, an adverse impact to adjacent properties, to... property seems to me to be a, an adverse impact to adjacent properties to actually comply with the code or else move the street to the south, which is not something that I believe is a desired outcome of complying with the code. I believe it's met. Standard number five, the variance would not change the character of the zoning district. I believe that that is substantially met and agree with staff on that finding. Standard number six, I believe that that is, that is substantially met. I think that granting the variance would not adversely affect health, safety, and welfare, although it is a, the area of town that apparently has a fair amount of pedestrian traffic. It's been, it's been that way for many years, and I believe if there was a problem, I think it would be incumbent on the Public Works Department to undertake a reconstruction project to build the required facilities to accommodate the public in that area. So I think that that is, that standard is substantially met. I think it's the minimum variance that will make possible reasonable use of the land. And so I believe standard seven is met, and I intend to support the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Vig. Ms. Williams?
Thank you. I agree with Mr. Vig, and I also intend to support the motion, just to add a bit to what his rationale was for support on standard number one. I think at least an exceptional circumstance is the fact that, as staff stated, that Ms. Cox is ahead of the municipality and is the first property to, I guess, update or rebuild on old land. And so, to be frank, I don't think she should be, or I think it's unfair to require her to give up some of her private property, whereas other property owners in the area aren't being forced to do that. And also, I, you know, I think part of the zoning and the code is for aesthetic reasons, and it would look odd, I think, to have one sidewalk in front of one property being much wider than the other properties in either of the two different sidewalk widening options that Mr. Vig described. And standard two, kind of goes back to what I was just saying. I think it would be an undue hardship on her compared to other property owners in the area to require her to give up her significant portion of the frontage to the sidewalk when other property owners aren't required to, and that the municipality will pay for it at some point in the future, which hasn't been identified yet. Same for number three. I think it really is the municipality being behind the eight ball a bit, and so the extraordinary or the exceptional circumstances far is not her fault. Standard four, I think if anything, is the variance, the variance will enhance the neighborhood as the public has testified to as well. And it's obvious that these trees are unique to the area and is something that folks in the neighborhood do enjoy. I do think the variance is keeping with the intent of the code, as I mentioned at the beginning, that I do think the intent is for, you know, to create an aesthetically pleasing community, which, you know, these trees obviously do. Standard six, I don't, I think if anything, again, granting the variance does positively affect the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood for the aesthetic reasons and also for some of the environmental reasons that the applicant mentioned. And I do think it is the minimum variance that's necessary because it will keep her property matching to the other properties in the area. So again, for those reasons, I do intend to support this motion.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Are there other comments from board members? Mr. Fink?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I intend on supporting the motion and commend Mr. Vig and Ms. Williams for, I think, a very artful and creative rationale on the standards. I initially, looking at this stuff, the only way to get through the first standard was to tie it to the trees. And it was testimony, they are old trees, the biggest trees on the street. I think that in and of itself is a unique physical circumstance, something we haven't addressed and we're not really charged with doing. I think there's a takings issue. I don't think if there's not ameasement and there's not a right of way, you can require someone to put a public sidewalk on their property. And to the extent the code does that, I think that, as applied, it would be unconstitutional, maybe entitled to some compensation from the, from the city. That's not before us, but I just want to put that on the record. To me, that's an important factor. And I think it would harm the neighborhood to enforce the letter of the law in this case. I think we have met the standards, and I intend on supporting them.
Thank you, Mr. Fink. Ms. Denny?
Thank you. I guess I agree with Mr. Vig and Ms. Williams in that removal of the trees and the addition of several hundred square feet of additional concrete is probably not in keeping with what the municipality had intended. Doing that would just make it look like another commercial building downtown. I think retaining the trees and the smaller residential-type sidewalk is more in keeping with that, the whole neighborhood, and I intend to support the motion.
Thank you, Ms. Denny. I also intend to support the motion for the, for the reasons outlined by all of the board But with that, I think we still should vote. That motion passes by a vote of five to zero. I do need to read for the record that every final decision of the board shall clearly state on its face, it is a final decision with respect to all issues involved in the case, and that the parties have 30 days from the date of mailing or other distribution of the decision to file an appeal to the Superior Court. With that, there's someone that, I don't know if they came in, oh, okay, that was our last case for the evening. So that brings us to reports. My only report is that Mr. Ron was in the chair once, and then he takes vacation, so there will be, there will be words. Mr. Barrett, any, any comments, reports?
Mr. Chair, in four cases for June 9th, could we get a preliminary head count for June 9th? Everybody think they'll be able to make it? Okay. Thank you.
Yes. Thank you. And I guess might as well keep with tradition and ask the question. Nothing new on the additional, new board member front?
Only that I got in trouble again by bringing it up. But I'm just not going to stop. You have to tread lightly because it is a bit political. I mean, these are appointments. Enough said.
Well, I can honestly say that this makeup has a lot of political animals on this board, the makeup of this board. Are there any comments by any of the board members? If not, we're adjourned.